I have got to be here. She has been so busy. I'm not making this up. I don't know what we're doing. I don't know. 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 It's not, it's not in the part of it yet. It's just part out of that or something.
Do they have it?
Yeah. Or it's something similar. There's like, yeah. That's a good one. I, 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 I have two, two, four hours. I mean, like, like on the Capitol. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So. Um. People would pay me now. That's what it is. Yeah. Wait, I have an expense account. Is that you? I don't know. You're my expense account.
Yeah. I don't know where that's coming from, but sure. Send bills. Yeah, that's my idea as well. And I don't know. I just sent it over to City Hall.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We can start recording.
Recording in progress.
Thank you so much. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 26, 2024, regular business meeting of the McMinnville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and request Ms. Snarrow, City Recorder, to do the roll call.
Councilor Geary.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Councilor Menke.
She's present.
Councilor Chenoweth.
Present.
Councilor Peralta.
Here.
Councilor Payne.
Here.
Council President Garvin.
Here.
Mayor Drapkin.
Here. Thank you so much. And I've asked Council President Garvin, Garvin, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands under the indivisible, liberally and justice of all.
Thank you so much. We're now going to go to comments from community members. I would ask that any interested audience member that's in, that is interested in speaking takes this opportunity to provide comment to the council. Any comment that's provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments are limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature, or you can send a chat directly to the city recorder and they will announce you. When you provide your comment, please remember to announce your name and the city you live in for the record, and please remember to fill out a public comment card to submit to the city recorder prior to leaving. With that, do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
No one has signed up.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to provide public comment this evening? And is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public comment? And I don't have my computer set up, so I can't see the Zoom screen yet. Okay, not hearing any. We will go to advice and information from councilors on their committee and board assignments. I'll start to my right this evening with Councilor Menke. Actually, I will start with Councilor Peralta. Oh, are you ready, sir?
I am ready. I have no report. Cog did not meet, and neither did MCM 11.
Thank you. And Councilor Geary?
Uh, thank you. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Payne?
Landscape Review Committee is holding interviews on Tuesday. That's all, or Monday, the second. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilor Menke?
Uh, Fortinable Housing is holding interviews for new members on next Tuesday. There was no meeting this month. YCAP had a board meeting last Tuesday, basically discussed where we are going forward, a lot of discussion about the navigation center. Beyond that, I do not have anything further to report.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. Wycom hasn't met since their last meeting. They won't meet till January. Visit McMinnville held their last meeting for the year, still expecting some revenues to be down, and overall through the state, it's fairly flat. But overall, the year for tourism in the state of Oregon's been down, and McMinnville's no, no exception to that. So I look forward to what Visit McMinnville 2.0 does. They have their annual retreat in January after my term expires, but they have a bright future with the board they have and the new leadership they have in place. So happy to see what comes of that. The Fire District, we did go under contract for a new building, which will be our first additional substation as promised in the bond effort. It's still in some final stages of inspections and whatnot, but we hope to close on that here no later than the end of January. And that's out on Three Mile Lane, also known as the old TTR building. The fire engine that we last bought as a city became a reserve this last week. One of our new fire engines went into service when that old engine one was 600 miles shy of 100,000 miles that we bought as a city in 2015. And you might see a medic out in Amity soon as the day car that we have will be put out there just to better service the ASA and some of our rural McMinnville residents on that side of the district. And Airport Commission, the Airport Commission Chair resigned last meeting. He had a year left on his term. He cited he wanted to be able to better advocate for some airport users out there, but didn't cite any specific instances that he wasn't able to advocate for. There is some openings on the Airport Commission, and I believe those are open through the end of the week. So if you're listening and you're interested in serving on the Airport Commission, make sure to get your application in. Thank you.
Thank you. This week, I had an opportunity to welcome the Oregon Aero Connect. I have to get the entire name right here. It was, it was a challenging name. It was the Oregon Aero Connect Symposium at Evergreen Aviation Space Museum. So this brought a whole bunch of engineers and professionals working in aerospace and related industries to the city of McMinnville for a day. It was heavily encouraged by a local business owner here and done in conjunction with McMinnville Economic and Development Partnership. Also, we had our Water and Light meeting, and one agenda item of note is the purchase and sale agreement on the Miller property is coming at you, so watch out for that. I also attended the Mayor's Water Council with John Deeds, the general manager, and James Burke from Water and Light, items that, as you all know, are near and dear to my heart, including destruction of PFAS in wastewater systems through pyrolysis. Love to hear all that conversation, but John and James were very pleased to go and to see and experience this kind of other side of conferences when theirs tend to go much more, tend to dive into one subject and that it's much more technical. So overall, it was a really good experience. And then yesterday morning, I had the honor of serving the annual Thanksgiving Day Dinner to some of our everyday community at First Baptist Church. And with that, I will go to department head reports, starting with our city manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you want to start with a posted action item or general report?
I was going to do general reports and end with our city attorney.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items to report. Just to note, city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday this week in observance of Thanksgiving, and for those who celebrate, we wish you a happy and safe Thanksgiving. I'll be taking some personal time, and we'll be out of town December 5th through 9th. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. And Special Projects Manager Jody Christensen, anything additional?
Thank you. I would like to remind the council and our audience members and those watching, we do have a Third Street Improvement Project Community Forum this coming Monday, December 2nd, in this room, starting at 5:00. 5:00 to 5:30 will be a general open house, and at 5:30, we'll be given a presentation with the consultants. And we're talking about some changes to the original discussions that have happened in past forums. There's a more flexible approach to the design. We're really looking for community input on that. And to complement our community forum, we have an online survey through iHeartMac.org. With that survey, it should take you no more than five minutes. We're asking some key questions about flexibility. There, you can also pick up a printed survey, starting on Monday. We'll have printed surveys at the Community Development Center. We'll also have them available at the community forum. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Community Development Director Heather Richards?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilor. So to continue the discussion of public engagement, we have a lot going on in the month of December to gather community input. We currently have another survey out that is our, for our housing production strategy. That survey ends on December 4th. We have 450 responses. Our goal is 500. This is a survey for people to fill out to share with us their challenges with achieving housing in McMinnville. It's going to inform our action plan as a city as to what we can do to help overcome those challenges. So it's an important survey for people. I encourage you to go online. You can find it on our website. You can also find it on iHeartMac. So please fill it out so that we can hear from people and what their housing challenges are, so that we can make the right actions moving forward. Then on Tuesday, December 3rd, we have another open house in this room. This, this open house will be for the discussion of transitional housing. Transitional housing is sort of the interim housing between emergency shelter and achieving permanent housing. It's one of the housing types that we are deficient in here in McMinnville, and we think it will really help in terms of getting our houseless population into permanent housing. Once people achieve shelter, they're able to actually work towards other permanent solutions in their life so that they can achieve permanent housing. So that, that open house is from 5:30 to 7:00. It is an opportunity to learn about the codes that the city's putting together for transitional housing and what it will look like and how, how we're bringing it into the city as a whole. So we encourage people to learn more about that. It's moving through our process in terms of our planning. Commission is considering it right now to make a recommendation to city council, but we want to make sure the public has the opportunity to learn about it in a less informal process than a public hearing process and be able to provide some feedback. Then lastly, on December 12th, we have a community design workshop for our Northwest Rubber Site that we acquired. This is an opportunity for people to come again to this room, Kent Taylor Civic Hall, from 4:00 to 7:00, and learn about, from our three finalist development teams, who they are, what type of development they do, their ideas for the site, and then, most importantly, provide your own input and feedback for what you would like to see happen on that site. It's an opportunity for the community to get engaged and really make an impact into this important project that we think will be a significant project for the city of McMinnville and the community moving forward.
Thank you very much. And Claudia Snarrow, City Recorder?
Yes, just want to remind the council that the next city council meeting is December 10th. It is the last regular city council meeting of the year, so it is going to be a heavy agenda. And then after that, we have our last work session of the year, which will be December 18th.
Thank you. And Vicki Hedges, HR Director?
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And we will end with our city attorney, who, in addition to any other reporting, also has an action item to bring forward to the council, Mr. David Leitenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. As discussed in the executive session, the city has been in a contractual relationship with Faccler Construction for the construction of any Door Place Navigation Center. A portion of that construction came to the city as a problematic change, and then the city denied the request for a change order. That led to a claim for additional compensation by Faccler, and after that was denied by the architect, Faccler brought a mediation claim. The result of that mediation claim is before you, is, has been discussed in executive session as potential or pending litigation and will be made part of the public record. At this time, I would ask that council, I would ask that council make and pass a motion to allow the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement with Faccler Construction based on this term sheet.
Great, so we'll call for a motion and then have discussion?
That would be appropriate. A motion, a second, and then discussion.
Thank you.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilor Chenoweth.
Second.
And a second from Councilor Payne. So let's open this up for conversation now. Does anyone want to start? I'm going to address the issue of redundancy, if that's okay, Mr. Leitenberg and Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So over the last couple of weeks, and especially as temperatures have fallen and construction delays have been holding up the opening of the navigation center, the low barrier emergency overnight shelter, multiple things have happened, one of which, and that I'm going to underline because of the redundancy that's called out in the settlement agreement, one of the things was some un, incomplete construction work that is rather minor in nature. However, it does prohibit the facility from opening, things related to the fire suppression system, et cetera. And so with that, while our city staff teams were working on preparing for this mediation, I contacted Oregon Housing and Community Services and was able to land on an emergency procurement in order to complete those minor items so that we can try to get these doors open as quickly as possible. In the settlement here, the fixes to the fire suppression system, along with some of the other minor construction work, at this point, YCAP is also in process trying to get a contractor in to get them. Those items are also in here as a requirement for Faccler to complete, is my understanding. And while we understand this redundancy is there, there's a preference to have the redundancy in there to make sure that we can get the work done and that the, that it does not inhibit the doors opening. And then, please correct me if I'm wrong, on this, I believe if YCAP is able to complete those items, and that happens before Faccler comes in to do the work, then the cost of doing those repairs would be able to be deducted from the construction payments for the work that was incomplete. Is that correct?
I believe that that is in keeping with the underlying contract and is also in keeping with the terms of this term sheet settlement agreement.
Perfect. And I know there were multiple comments about communication along those lines. I would just take a moment to really thank our Special Projects Manager Jody Christensen, who has carried this project from the very beginning. This has been a non-traditional role for the city of McMinnville to play in order to meet a need. She has done an incredible job, including all the way up through this mediation, and, and you've, you have been a champion of this project, and this project would not be where it is. It would not be without you and your diligence. So thank you so much for everything that you have done. Councilor Geary?
Yes, thank you. I, I will be, I believe opposing this agreement because I, I, with, with what's in front of us here, I can't, being a builder, it's hard to agree to this, to provide this agreement to the builder. The, due to a bad faith actor who could not live up to their commitments, and they put people at risk, they put people at hazard, we do not have the needed resource in our community open. This agreement doesn't hold them accountable enough, and it is in a system which allows bad faith actors to not be held fully accountable. So I, I hope that, and I appreciate Special Projects Manager Christensen for getting, getting the building open as a prime goal and, and getting close to achieving that while also managing this. My opposition to the agreement is, is in, is in, is not reflective of any staff member's work. It is reflective of the bad faith acting of the general contractor we hired to perform that work.
Thank you. Councilor Chenoweth? No comment. And Councilor Peralta, any comments?
Yeah, I, I, I share Councilor Geary's frustration. I don't think that the proposed deal holds the contractor accountable for their non-performance. I would like to see greater consequences for what they did or failed to do. That being said, for me, the priority is to get the doors open, to make sure that people are able to get in, out of the streets, and, and for that, any door place to be open and functioning at the earliest possible date. And it seems like this agreement, frustrating though it is, gives us that path. So with an incredible amount of anger, I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Councilor Payne?
I, sorry, I look creepy. I agree with what Councilor Geary and Councilor Peralta have stated. I would love to reject it just based on the principle that they have acted in bad faith and still have some, albeit minor, minor things to complete. I am, I don't love the idea of accepting this agreement, but I also understand there's a risk and potential cost with not. So I'm, I don't know how I'm going to go right now, but I'm conflicted.
Often the case, isn't it? Councilor Menke?
Well, in view of the fact that this was supposed to be open in May, near the end of May, and it is now November, and they received notice of completion sometime at the end of September, we're still arguing about a very poorly installed fire suppression system, which we can't open until there's been a correction on it. I am very unhappy, and I am very empathetic to YCAP and their position in this situation. It really galls me to have to probably agree to this agreement. It just, I'm not happy with the whole process. It's been very bad. That's all I got.
Thank you. And Council President, Councilor Peralta?
Thank you. Sorry for going back to me. Did the city staff recommend hiring Faccler, or who recommended Faccler?
I believe it was a public process and that we received competitive bids, but I'll let our Community Development Director talk about that.
We did, we did do a request for proposals, and it was a competitive process. The scoring team consisted of staff from the city and staff from YCAP and the architect as well. And the scores can be made public record, I guess. I don't know how to answer this question. Well, the city staff did not score Faccler the highest.
Thank you.
The city staff could have chosen otherwise, correct?
No.
It was our project.
No. So we did a, we did a competitive RFP, which has a scoring process associated with it and a selection committee. The, the competitive RFP has scores associated with different aspects of the proposals. It's all embedded in the RFP itself. And so when the selection committee does their scoring process, we need to choose the highest scoring candidate from that process.
And so of that process, city staff didn't score Faccler the highest, but Faccler scored the highest overall of that RFP process?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Additional comments?
I would just like to share the sentiment that's been shared on the die set. Although I don't like to agree to this term sheet, I do feel it's in the best interest of our taxpayers and the city budget and to be financially prudent to move forward, as well as in the, the safety of our unhoused community to get this facility open now that we're entering our very cold evenings. I will be voting yes on it, but it's really out of a, a fact of a bad actor exploiting the, the legal system and knowing that it would cost us more money to hold their feet to the fire than to write a check and move forward.
Thank you. A continuation of that would be?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
If there would be no further discussion, it would be most appropriate, under the newest rulemaking for this sort of thing, to request that the city recorder poll the council for their votes.
Okay, great. I'll wrap up my comments and request that. Thank you. Just as a continuation of what Council President said, my understanding is that if we don't move forward on this settlement, we will move into binding arbitration, and that could potentially drag out for months or a year and take a tremendous amount, potentially take a tremendous amount of both staff time and additional out-of-pocket cost for the city of McMinnville. And so to the Council President's point of moving towards a decision that is the most responsible financially to the taxpayers, as well as the fact that these doors, as Councilor Menke pointed out, were meant to be open in May, I, I, I am also really heartbroken.
It was first by Councilor Chenoweth and second by Councilor Payne. Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Councilor Menke?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
And Council President Garvin?
Aye.
Thank you. And the motion passes five to one.
Opening, and then please correct me if I'm wrong on this. I believe if YCAP is able to complete those items, and that happens before Fackler comes in to do the work, then the cost of doing those repairs would be able to be deducted from the construction payments for the work that was incomplete. Is that correct?
I believe that that is in keeping with the underlying contract and is also in keeping with the terms of this term sheet settlement agreement.
Perfect, and I know there were multiple comments about communication along those lines. I would just take a moment to really thank our special projects manager, Jody Christensen, who has carried this project from the very beginning. This has been a non-traditional role for the city of McMinnville to play in order to meet a need. She has done an incredible job, including all the way up through this mediation, and you have been a champion of this project. And this project would not be where it is. It would not be without you and your diligence. So, thank you so much for everything that you have done. Counselor Geary.
Yes, thank you. I will be, I believe, opposing this agreement because I, with what's in front of us here, I can't. Being a builder, it's hard to agree to this, to provide this agreement to the builder. Due to a bad faith actor who could not live up to their commitments, and they put people at risk, they put people at hazard. We do not have the needed resource in our community open. This agreement doesn't hold them accountable enough, and it is in a system which allows bad faith actors to not be held fully accountable. So, I hope that, and I appreciate Special Projects Manager Christensen for getting the building open as a prime goal and getting close to achieving that while also managing this. My opposition to the agreement is not reflective of any staff members' work. It is reflective of the bad faith acting of the general contractor we hired to perform that work.
Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth? No comment. Counselor Peralta, any comments?
Yeah, I share Counselor Geary's frustration. I don't think that the proposed deal holds the contractor accountable for their non-performance. I would like to see greater consequences for what they did or failed to do. That being said, for me, the priority is to get the doors open, to make sure that people are able to get in, out of the streets, and for that, any door placed to be open and functioning at the earliest possible date. And it seems like this agreement, frustrating though it is, gives us that path. So, with an incredible amount of anger, I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Counselor Payne.
Aye. Sorry, I look creepy. I agree with what Counselor Geary and Counselor Peralta have stated. I would love to reject it just based on the principle that they have acted in bad faith and still have some, albeit minor things, to complete. I don't love the idea of accepting this agreement, but I also understand there's a risk and potential cost with not. So, I don't know how I'm gonna go right now, but I'm conflicted.
Often the case, isn't it? Counselor Menke.
Well, in view of the fact that this was supposed to be open in May, near the end of May, and it is now November, and they received notice of completion sometime at the end of September, we're still arguing about a very poorly installed fire suppression system, which we can't open until there's been a correction on it. I am very unhappy, and I am very empathetic to YCAP and their position in this situation. It really galls me to have to probably agree to this agreement. It just, I'm not happy with the whole process. It's been very bad. That's all I got.
Thank you. And Counselor President, Counselor Peralta?
Thank you. Sorry for going back to me. Did the city staff recommend hiring Fackler? Or who recommended Fackler?
I believe it was a public process and that we received competitive bids, but I'll let our community development director talk about that.
We did do a request for proposals, and it was a competitive process. The scoring team consisted of staff from the city and staff from YCAP and the architect as well. And the scores can be made public record, I guess. I don't know how to answer this question. Well, the city staff did not score Fackler the highest.
Thank you.
The city staff could have chosen otherwise, correct?
No.
It was our project.
No. So, we did a competitive RFP, which has a scoring process associated with it and a selection committee. The competitive RFP has scores associated with different aspects of the proposals. It's all embedded in the RFP itself. And so, when the selection committee does their scoring process, we need to choose the highest-scoring candidate from that process.
And so, of that process, city staff didn't score Fackler the highest, but Fackler scored the highest overall of that RFP process?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Additional comments?
I would just like to share the sentiment that's been shared on the DIAS that although I don't like to agree to this term sheet, I do feel it's in the best interest of our taxpayers and the city budget and to be financially prudent to move forward, as well as in the safety of our unhoused community to get this facility open now that we're entering our very cold evenings. I will be voting yes on it, but it's really out of a fact of a bad actor exploiting the legal system and knowing that it would cost us more money to hold their feet to the fire than to write a check and move forward.
Thank you. A continuation of that would be...
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
If there would be no further discussion, it would be most appropriate, under the newest rulemaking for this sort of thing, to request that the city recorder poll the council for their votes.
Okay, great. I'll wrap up my comments and request that. Thank you. Just as a continuation of what Counsel President said, my understanding is that if we don't move forward on this settlement, we will move into binding arbitration, and that could potentially drag out for months or a year and take a tremendous amount, potentially take a tremendous amount of both staff time and additional out-of-pocket cost for the city of McMinnville. And so, to the Counsel President's point of moving towards a decision that is the most responsible financially to the taxpayers, as well as the fact that these doors, as Counselor Menke pointed out, were meant to be open in May. I am also really heartbroken.
It was first by Counsel Chenoweth and second by Counsel Payne. Counsel Geary.
Aye.
Counsel Menke.
Aye.
Counsel Chenoweth.
Aye.
Counsel Peralta. Counsel Payne.
Aye.
And Counsel President Carvin.
Aye.
Thank you. And the motion passes five to one. Have Counselor, do you have anything else for us this evening, sir?
That was my only item of business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have Counselors had an opportunity to review the September 2024 cash and investment report? And are there any questions? Okay, we are now going to move to our one ordinance of the night. We are going to consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5154. Does any Counselor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? I'd like to declare a potential conflict of interest, and it will not impede on my ability to oversee these hearings or cast a vote should need arise. And I'm lying. That's not true. I don't need to, I do not need to have a, I have no potential conflict of interest here. I was, right before we came in, I asked Mr. Leitenberg about an upcoming thing on the December 10th meeting where I thought I might have a potential conflict of interest. And so, and we talked that through, and that is why I just falsely declared a potential conflict of interest. Anyways, we'll now consider the matter of ordinance number 5154. Does any Counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will the city attorney, David Leitenberg, please read the ordinance by title only?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5154. An ordinance approving a zone change from R3 Medium Density 6,000 Square Foot Lot Residential to R4 Medium High Density 5,000 Square Foot Lot Residential Zone for property of approximately 2.93 acres, located west of Northeast Newby Street and Northeast Hoffman Drive intersection. Tax lot R4409DC01100, docket ZC3-24.
Thank you so much. I'd like to call on Heather Richards, our community development director, to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors. McMinnville is at a place now where we don't have a lot of buildable land left for housing, and the buildable land that we do have left is what I would describe as quirky, if I was choosing optimistic words, and problematic if I was choosing negative positions on it. And I think as we work through this land use application that's in front of you, this is demonstrative of sort of what we're seeing across the city right now. So, this is ordinance number 5154. It is a three-acre, approximately a three-acre piece of property. It's zoned R3 today, and the applicant has submitted an application to rezone it to an R4 zone. The R3 zone is our medium-density zone with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The R4 zone is our medium-high-density zone with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. It's important to recognize that there's actually no development proposed on this. McMinnville really struggles without having the specificity of a development project with zone changes, but you are allowed to apply for a zone change without actually having a development proposal already in play. This does meet a city council strategy of housing to create diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods, and the two objectives for that, which is to collaborate to improve the financial feasibility of diverse housing development opportunities and conduct thorough and timely planning and forecasting to ensure that regulatory frameworks and land supply align with market-driven housing needs. So, the project itself is coming to you from the Planning Commission. They hosted a public hearing on November 7th, and at that time, they recommended approval to you as the city council, finding that the application complies with all the procedural requirements, with our zoning ordinance locally, with our comprehensive plan, and also with statewide planning goals and applicable state laws. Just to walk you through some of it, it is, right now, is in a comp plan designation as a residential comprehensive plan. What that means is any residential zone can be applied to the property as long as the underlying comp plan designation is residential. This is a map showing both the surrounding zoning to the site. So, the light yellow is our R1 zone, which has a 9,000 square foot minimum lot size. The darker yellow is our R2 zone. That's a 7,000 square foot lot size. The salmon color is R3, that's 6,000. And then, the pink that you see on the south side of this is R4, and that is our 5,000 square foot lot size. Just to let you know, the differences in these now with the missing middle housing code is the lot size essentially, because you, all missing middle housing types are allowed on all lots. And then, the R4 zone, what differentiates it from the other zones is that we do allow apartments on the R4 zone as well, and they are not allowed in the other three zones. The project site is a vacant piece of property that is located right near Grand Haven. It's also in close proximity to a school and close proximity to collectors in the city as well. What's interesting about this piece of property is that it has a wetland that runs right down the middle of it. So, the blue line is showing that. It was historically a drainage ditch. It's now classified as a wetland. I've worked with three different property owners on this site trying to figure out how to develop it with that wetland rolling through it. We did have an approved subdivision back in, I think, 2017 with a previous property owner that allowed for it to be subdivided and have a street system. The street system actually was approved to be built over the wetland. That was at a time when we could mitigate wetlands because we still had credits available for wetland mitigation here in Yamhill County. Those no longer exist. So, we can't disturb wetlands at this point in time because we don't have the credits in which to mitigate that disturbance. So, now, we don't have the opportunity to create that street system across this site to subdivide it into smaller lots, and that's one of the reasons the applicant is applying for it to be an R4 zone so that it could be potentially a larger development with its own internal private circulation system rather than on a street, a public street right away. So, the criteria in which the zone changes are reviewed here in McMinnville are under 17.74.020. It's a three-part test for the zone change. The first part is that the proposed amendment's consistent with the goals and policies of the comp plan. The second part is that the proposed amendment is orderly and timely. It considers the pattern of development in the area, surrounding land uses, and any changes which may have occurred in the neighborhood or community to warrant the proposed amendment. We normally often think of that as neighborhood compatibility. And then, the third component is utilities and services can be efficiently provided to serve the proposed use or other potential uses in the proposed zoning district. Interestingly, we also have in this section of our code a caveat. And the caveat written into the code says, "When the proposed amendment concerns needed housing, as defined in the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan and State Statute, criterion B shall not apply to the rezoning of land designated for residential use on the plan map." In addition, "The housing policies of the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan shall be given added emphasis, and the other policies contained in the plan should not be used to exclude needed housing, to unnecessarily decrease densities, or to allow special conditions to be attached, which would have the effect of discouraging needed housing through unreasonable cost or delay." So, that essentially says if we need housing, criterion B no longer applies as a legal test of compliance. And in the comp plan, we're looking at the policies that support housing, and other policies within the comp plan are not given the same precedence. So, in terms of needed housing, to see if criterion B does apply or not, the city of McMinnville adopted a housing needs analysis, as you well know, in 2024, that identified the need for 46,000-plus homes by 2041. 67% of those housing units are intended to be multifamily housing. And we are, we do have a goal and policy within that housing needs analysis that we would like to see more density in our infill developments. We currently have a shortfall of about 1,101 homes in terms of a current deficit of housing units to serve our community. So, the housing shortage is significant by 2041. The types of homes needed in that 4,657 homes, 1,537 of them should be multifamily, including apartment buildings. So, that's the R4 zone. And then, 373 of those homes should be infill development, which this property is, and that is intended to be a higher density than what we've had as development through the last 20 years. Our infill development should build more homes per acre than that past development. In terms of our land shortage with our current land supply, the city has a shortage of 1,000 homes. And then, the zone change proposal will upzone from R3 to R4, which will allow that multifamily development, if that's what's proposed, and more infill at a higher density, potentially helping to meet the housing needs. So, based on that, our finding was that criterion B did not apply because the proposed amendment does meet our housing, is trying to respond to our housing needs in our community. So, now, we just have a two-part test. The two-part test is the proposed amendment's consistent with the goals and policies of the comp plan and that utilities and services can be efficiently provided. So, in terms of our comp plan, we went through the comp plan looking at all our housing goals to see if it complies, and the findings for that was that it does, the zone change proposal. And you have that findings document in front of you. A couple of the significant ones is in our housing, we have a goal to promote development of affordable quality housing for all city residents. And the findings is that although no development is proposed, the R4 zone would allow for multifamily development that the R3 zone does not allow for. And multifamily development may lead to lower-cost rentals or owner-occupied housing. Another goal is to promote a residential development pattern that is land-intensive and energy-efficient, that provides for an urban level of public and private services, and that allows unique and innovative development techniques to be employed in residential densities. Under this goal is a policy that all residential zoning classifications shall be allowed in areas designated as residential in the comp plan map. And we showed that to you, that this is what is happening with that property. And then, interestingly, our R3 and R4 zones are both considered medium-density zones. The R4 is medium to high. It's considered medium to high because all the housing products are allowed in the R4 zone. It's just not a dedicated high-density zone, much like our R5 zone that we created back in 2020 with the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. That only allows apartment projects. The R4 zone will allow everything, and so, it's considered a medium-to-high-density zone. And because of that, it has the same policy structure that the R3 zone has in our comp plan. So, it's areas that are not committed to low-density development is what you can zone into R3 and R4. So, this is an R3 zone currently. It can be zoned to R4. Areas that have direct access from a collector are arterial streets or a local collector's street within 600 feet of a collector, within 600 feet, and it has that. Areas that are not subject to development limitations such as topography, flooding, or poor drainage. Areas where the existing facilities have the capacity for additional development and areas within one-quarter mile of existing or planned public transportation. And it has all of those characteristics. Another comp plan policy we have is our Great Neighborhood Principles. So, are our baker's dozen of 13 principles. And those were crafted to guide land use patterns. It was also crafted to ensure equitable access for all McMinnville citizens to live in a great neighborhood. Everybody has the right. So, it applies to zone changes. It also applies to all new development, infill, or greenfield development. In this regard, we went through the Great Neighborhood Principles, and the two that are most impactful for this particular zone change is housing for diverse incomes and generations and a housing variety in a neighborhood. So, our findings was that this proposal, it's three acres, so the neighborhood's bigger than this site, that this proposal brings the neighborhood into better compliance with those two Great Neighborhood Principles. I showed you what was around it in terms of R1, R2, R3, and R4 zoning and housing types, and this brings another element to the neighborhood as well, or the opportunity for one. We didn't look at it from a statewide planning goals. We have to look at it to see, make sure it meets state laws. It meets all the applicable state laws as well. Those findings are also in your findings document. To go through one of them, when we talk about utilities and services, often, transportation comes up as a discussion here in McMinnville for housing. So, I wanted to walk you through that analysis particular to this site. So, when we do have what we call an upzone in a zone change application, that means someone's applying for a zoning that could have higher-density impact on the system. We require a traffic impact analysis, and we require that both at the time of the zone change and then also at the development proposal. We have a test for how you do that traffic impact analysis, but during those two separate processes, we're applying that test, so to speak. So, the traffic impact analysis must show that the proposal is consistent with the city of McMinnville's Transportation System Plan, our TSP, and it also must show that the project does not create what we call a significant impact due to the new zoning. So, a significant impact, as defined in the city of McMinnville, is an, and this is an actually more conservative definition of significant impact than is in the state law. So, we took it, the state law has a higher significant impact, meaning it allows a lot more, and we took it down further from that. So, our definition of a significant impact is a net increase of 200 average daily trips. We call that ADT. Or 20 peak-hour PM trips, or an increase in ADT of a street above the maximum permitted. So, what that means is the applicant hires a transportation engineer. They do an analysis to see if the new zone is going to create more trips that trigger that threshold, the 200 average daily trips or the 20 peak-hour PM trips. And if it does, then they need to do a further analysis as to what that impact means to all the intersections around it. If it doesn't go above that threshold, then it's considered it's not going to impact those intersections around it to a failing nature, and so, they don't have to do a further analysis for that. So, for this particular, and you have a copy of the transportation analysis in the meeting packet that you received today, but this particular zone change, because it's going from R3 to R4, the analysis showed it was only increasing average daily trips by 123, and then, it was increasing the peak PM trips by 10. So, it didn't trigger that threshold requiring an additional traffic impact analysis. Now, we do that based on the different types of housing developments that could be allowed in the zone. If a development proposal comes in that is very, has a lot of high-intensity development proposed, we can, as the city, require another analysis to be done specific to that particular project to see if it triggers that threshold. And if it does, then we would require that traffic impact analysis for the intersections around it. But since we don't have that development proposal in play, we're looking at the assumptions of the zone and what can be built in that zone. So, in terms of testimony received at the Planning Commission, there was no public testimony received prior to the public hearing. We did have, at the public hearing, two residents testify in opposition to the land use application, Jerry Lanier and Travis Cameron. Both were residents in the surrounding neighborhood and had concerns about the potential negative impact of apartment buildings. So, the focus was on a high-density apartment project with the rezone, potential negative impact of apartment buildings on the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of scale, in terms of property value, and in terms of parking congestion on the streets. And we have provided you with the minutes from that meeting that show what that testimony was. The Planning Commission discussed, in their deliberations for the land use application, they discussed the testimony, and they understood the complexities associated with developing this land as a subdivision. So, no one has been able to actually move it forward into housing because of the zoning that would only allow a subdivision and not being able to put the circulation pattern into the subdivision with the wetland running through the middle of it, and then, no longer an opportunity for mitigating that wetland. However, they did want to mitigate the impact of the scale of the apartment, if there were apartment buildings built adjacent to some of the single-detached residential neighborhoods next to this site. So, to walk you through that a little bit, in our R4 zone, we talk about, when we talk about scale, we usually talk about scale in terms of setbacks, yard setbacks, and height. So, the yard setbacks in the R4 zone are, a front yard shall not be less than 15 feet, a side yard should not be less than six feet, unless it's an exterior side yard, which is then 15. is then 15 feet, so that means it's facing a street on a corner. A rear yard should not be less than 20 feet. The building height in an R4 zone is, it shall not exceed 60 feet in height. However, there is also a caveat in the yard requirements, which says all yards shall be increased, so the setbacks, over the requirements of this section by one foot for each two feet of building height over 35 feet. So, 35 feet is the height that we allow in all our other residential zones. So, if the R4 zone, someone wants to build an apartment complex that's higher than 35 feet, and our typical apartment projects are what we call three-story woody walk-ups, and you've seen them come through here where they've made a request to go, if we've put a limitation on height, they've come in and said, "We need to go from the 35-feet limitation to 40-something feet," because typically, to get a peek on the building, that's where we need to end up. But, all yards shall be increased one foot for each two feet of building height over 35 feet, so if it actually went up to 60 feet, that would be a 25-foot differential, and all yard setbacks would be increased by 12 and 1/2 feet to respond to that. So, comparing that with the R3 zone, the yards are all, the setbacks are all the same except for that side yard. The side yard in the R4 zone is more narrow, it's six feet, and the R3 zone is seven and one-half feet. Other than that, though, the front yard and the side yard, the rear yard remain the same. The building height in the R3 zone is 35 feet, though. So, based on that, the Planning Commission had a lot of deliberation because there is state law that prevents the city from deliberately decreasing densities in housing projects, and with the zone change, though, they had a lot of deliberation about how they could have the discussion of mitigation within our comp plan policies and findings. So, they did add a condition of approval to you in their recommendation. It's the only condition of approval in the zone change, and it is that all yard setbacks shall be established at 15 feet along the west and north property lines. The finding for this is in Comp Plan Policy 187.50, that's our Great Neighborhood Principles, and the Great Neighborhood Principle number eight is about, the great neighborhoods have, it's about human scale, that's what it is, that great neighborhoods have buildings and spaces that are designed to be comfortable at a human scale, and that foster human interaction within the built environment, and there's a subset underneath that policy, and the subset A is that the size, form, and proportionality development is designed to function and be balanced with the existing built environment. So, by adding to the side yard setback, which is currently six feet, to potentially 15 feet, if that's where the side yard is on that north or west side, it sets it back further from that single-family residential zone, and then that step back that's in the R4 zone would start at that period, that 15-yard setback. So, you still get to 35 feet and start stepping back from there as well. To let you know, you know, where, in total development proposal comes in, we don't know what's going to be the front yard, rear yard, side yards on this, there will not be any exterior side yards. So, the north and west would be the ones that would start at 15 feet, and if one of them is a side yard, which, you know, potentially the north probably would be based on access points, then that would differ from six feet to 15 feet. So, in front of you, the options per our code, we bring to you the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and then you have, you then consider four different options. You can adopt the ordinance that's been brought to you affecting the proposed change as submitted by the Planning Commission. You can adopt the ordinance affecting the proposed change in an amended form, so if you wanted to amend it, add more conditions of approval with additional findings, then you could do that. You could refuse to adopt the amendment through a vote to deny it and provide findings for the denial, or you can call for a public hearing on the proposal and subject it to the notice requirement stated in the code, which would put us into another 35-day process to get the noticing out. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Thank you so much. Any specific staff questions at this time? We'll hold council discussion until after we have a motion. Council President, do you have one too, Chris? Council President?
Yeah, thank you, Heather, for the presentation. One of the questions I had is, I appreciated the thorough walkthrough of all the goals and how everything was met, but you did mention the 2019 plan, and so would any of those goals not have been met if the 2019-approved development wouldn't already be on the books?
The 2019-approved development being the Leonard Johnson subdivision that was approved?
Yeah.
I believe, and now I'm going to have to look this up, I believe he was in an R2 zone when that occurred.
Yeah, I remember it went to more density, but I didn't know if it was R1 to R3 or...
I think it was R1 to R2, I can't recall, and I can look that up while you guys have more questions if you need it, but in terms, yes, so his subdivision, as it came through, was reviewed against the comp plan policies at that time, it was found to be compliant with them.
Okay, but that doesn't, even if this was still R1, this current project would still meet all those goals, it doesn't, it's not like we progressively stepped this out to R4, it could have gone R1 to R4, just if we would have never approved that 2019 plan.
R1 to R4, I'd have to, I would have to look at the findings a little bit more specifically in that regard, because you know how I showed you that comp plan policy that combines R3 and R4 and the criteria for them? Because they're combined, when it got rezoned to an R3 zone, it met all those policies, right? And so now the R4 is meeting the same policies. In terms of, well, yeah, I guess so, because an R1 would have been that way as well. But without going, without going through the work, it's hard for me to sit here and say yes or no for something like that.
Okay, and then, second question would be on the yard setbacks that you called out in the bold print. Is that something that ultimately sticks, or can they still come back, the developer in the development stage still be able to come back and request a variance on that yard setback?
So, right now, with the zone change, what this does is this embeds that condition of approval on that property for that zoning of that property, and a development proposal would need to meet that. So, we're now pretending this is an R4 zone with this additional condition of approval on there. If they wanted to change that, they would need to come through a process to do so.
Okay. And in the record from that June 12 meeting, there was a bunch of what I would determine non-applicable questions from residents?
Yes, so that's a neighborhood meeting. It's done before the application is submitted to the city, so it's not part of our, necessarily our land use process, but is a requirement of our application, so, and the intention behind that was so that people knew what was going to be considered by the city and got more informed about it, and also our process. So, the questions you see in there in the neighborhood meeting material, I would suggest that those are probably fairly common questions that these neighborhood meetings are fielding. We, as staff, don't go to them deliberately because they are not considered part of the land use process, and we show up, they could become part of it.
Okay. No further questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chenoweth.
Yeah, I just want to be clear in what I heard from you, R3, 35 feet, R4, 60 feet?
Yes, but anything over 35 feet in the R4 zone needs to go, start going through this step-back process for all the feet above it.
Okay, so, the potential here, 35 feet would be three stories, 60 feet would be five stories?
Yeah, more or less.
Okay.
And I think the only project we have, because that's an expensive building type, when you go above three floors, you're now in a metal structural building type, which is much more expensive.
Right, right, but if they're asking to go from R3 to R4, that's the predominant reason, they must be wanting to go up?
No, so, the difference between an R3 and R4 in McMinnville is the R3 does not allow apartments, so it doesn't allow apartment projects, and without being able to put, I don't want to second-guess for the applicant why they're zoning the property, but this is my guess based on my history of dialogues with the property owners. If you're going to subdivide it, you need to have a public street system, and that's nearly impossible to put in there at this point in time with that wetland running through it, so then, by doing an apartment project of some sort, then you're getting access off the street and you have private circulation happening, so you don't have to traverse over that wetland.
Well, you can understand my concern, right? You know, a five-story hotel, was it something we wanted? A five-story apartment in the middle of a residential zone is probably also something we don't want, so...
Well, then, we should lower the building height in the R4 zone if we don't want it. I mean, that's what's allowed, and it's a residential zone, I hate to say that, but...
Right, if we approve it, yes. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for staff? Again, we're holding council discussion, so this is questions for staff currently. Okay, not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve, I will now ask for a motion to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 5154 and possibly pass it to a second reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Peralta and a second from Councilor Geary. All those in favor, please signify, no, excuse me, council discussion. Council President?
Just to point a clarity, it has to pass unanimous to get a second reading tonight?
That, that's true.
Thank you.
Any additional council discussion at this time? Not hearing any, I, we have a motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Okay, and the motion fails, or the motion passes with dissent, sorry, Ordinance Number 5154 passes by a vote of five to one on its first reading and will be brought back for a second reading on December 10th.
Okay, Mayor, if you can give me just one minute, because we have to meet a 120-day rule, and I want to make sure we're meeting it, or I'll need to ask the applicant for a tolling of the clock.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're at 110 days on December 10th.
Okay, thank you. With that, 8:03 PM, the meeting is adjourned.